Evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, October 13th, 2016, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the City Council. First item would be to call the meeting to order, which I have done, the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Bailey, would you lead us?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey.
Welcome.
And roll call this evening. I know Councilmember Poyer is out and that Councilmember Huffaker is en route, so I don't exactly know when he'll be here, but he will be here soon. First item on tonight's agenda would be our consent items, which include this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve our consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt this evening's consent items. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda would be citizens' comment. This would be a time if any member of the audience would like to address the council on any item that's not on this evening's agenda, we'd ask that you come up and give you three minutes. See no takers. We'll move on to our presentations tonight, for which we have three. The first being United Way Month proclamation. Who has that?
I have that one.
Councilmember Asparza.
I will warn you, I don't have my glasses.
That'd be a problem.
These are two and a halfs.
I think they're a little much. Whereas, United Way of Shalan and Douglas Counties has served the people of the region for over seventy years, and whereas monies contributed to the United Way by residents and businesses stay in Shalan and Douglas Counties and are invested to support programs to improve education outcomes for children and support families and alleviate poverty with oversight provided by a local volunteer board of directors, and whereas, United Way provides the most efficient utilization of convenient resources and people to access and respond to community identified needs and focus areas. And now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Wenatchee, or the city, I'm sorry, the Wenatchee City Council designate the month of October as United Way Month, and be it further resolved that the Wenatchee City Council urge all individuals and businesses to support the efforts of United Way by giving, volunteering, and/or advocating. Therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, in the county of Shalan in the state of Washington, on behalf of the people of Wenatchee, express our appreciation to the United Way volunteers, donors, and the United Way partner organizations striving for the education, health, and financial stability of every person as we grow and work for a better future. In witness whereof, I have hereunto subscribed my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed this thirteenth day of October 2016.
Thank you, Rusen. We got Allen Walker and we got the two fundraising chairs with us, Chief Crown and Chief Robbins, so come on up, guys. Retired Chief?
Retired Allen, yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. I'd really like to point out that we have some kind of support from the City of Wenatchee. We're very fortunate to have Councilwoman Asparza as part of the Board of Directors for the Board, Ms. Allison Williams as part of the Board of Directors, and Brooklyn Holton as well as part of the Board of Directors for United Way. And Steve's back there in the corner, and Steve and I get to work frequently, especially in regards to our ballot, what's next. So I certainly appreciate the city's support and recognizing this great effort, and then also having the current police chief, Steve Crown, and former Tom Robbins as part of the effort as well. It's just a great marriage, I believe, between the United Way, the efforts that we're doing in the community, and also for the city. Yeah, so thank you very much.
Do you want a picture? Maybe we want some pictures taken.
Yep, okay, we can take them. There we go. There we go. Oh, there we go. There we go. There.
All right. Smile.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Keith? The next proclamation is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Councilmember Kula.
Too often precious lives are interrupted or cut short by cancer. Breast cancer, one of the most common cancers among American women, affects roughly 230,000 women as well as 2,300 men each year, and is responsible for more than 400, excuse me, 40,000 deaths annually in the United States. Breast cancer does not discriminate. It strikes people of all races, ages, and income levels, and we must raise awareness of this disease and its symptoms so we can more easily identify it and more effectively treat it. This month, as we honor those whose lives were tragically cut short by breast cancer, and as we stand with their families, let us arm ourselves with the best knowledge, tools, and resources available to fight this devastating disease. Regular screenings and quality care are vital to improving outcomes for millions of people, and we are making strides in improving treatment options. Thanks to the Affordable Care Act, most health insurers are now required to cover recommended preventative services, including mammograms, at no extra cost, and Americans cannot be denied health coverage due to a pre-existing condition like breast cancer. Women and men can take precautionary action on their own by talking with their health care providers about what they can do to lower their individual risk factors and learning about what tests are right for them. For more information on breast cancer prevention, treatment of metastatic breast cancer, and the latest research, visit www.cancer.gov/breast. This month, we join together in honoring the women and men who lost their lives to breast cancer. In their memory, we recommit to supporting the hard-working researchers, health care providers, advocates, and organizations dedicated to treating and curing this devastating disease. We embrace our mothers, daughters, sisters, and loved ones currently battling breast cancer, along with their friends and families, and we resolve one day to defeat it. Now therefore, I Frank Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage citizens, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase awareness of what can be done to prevent and control breast cancer. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this thirteenth day of October 2016. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman Kula. Is anyone here to get the breast cancer proclamation tonight? Okay, we'll make sure it gets where it needs to go. And our last presentation tonight is regarding the Coyote Proclamation, or my favorite statute in downtown Wenatchee. Who's got that?
I have that, Your Honor.
Councilmember Bailey?
Whereas the city, excuse me, whereas the Wenatchee Area Genealogical Society has been in operation since 1971, and whereas the Genealogy Society Board have agreed to be the keepers of the coyote, and whereas for almost two decades coyote has been a solid and stalwart fixture in the community, and whereas coyote maintains a friendly and welcoming position on the steps of the museum annex building housing the genealogy library, and whereas coyote has demonstrated all the credentials required of a suburb genealogist, creative, skilled in hunting and tracking, possesses the strength of steel, patience, persistence, and enduring stamina, and whereas the iconic posture of coyote denotes his keen interest in genealogy, and whereas the Wenatchee Area Genealogical Society's mission is to connect, collect, and protect family histories, now therefore, on this date of October 13th, 2016, we, the City Council of Wenatchee, Washington, by unanimous proclamation, do attest and bestow on coyote the title of the official mascot of the Wenatchee Area Genealogical Society, and he will be called Wag's Coyote from this day forward. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this thirteenth day of October 2016. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Bailey. Is someone here for the proclamation? Who's, which one of the group up there? I see them all.
I think it's that.
Address the council and the audience. Oh, take our place of people.
We would like to thank you, the City, for the proclamation. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. I'd like to thank Allison and Tammy and David Erickson from the City who have been very helpful in our endeavor. We'd like to thank Penny Recrop, who became the children's home seniority who are going to help us in our adoption, and Jake Miller, who designed our coyote logo and business card and pin. I would like to introduce, I have with me the board members today, and they are going to present you with a coyote business card. And a coyote button. So please, please. Carolyn, Jen. And we're, I'm gonna put it on right now.
Thank you.
Hi.
Oh, I'm planning on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One of my favorite things.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's been on my agenda. My wife just retired, so I think we're gonna probably start getting more. So, thank you.
Do we have the coyote? Maybe hold the coyote?
Let's buy the coyote.
Cool.
Double button.
Uh huh. See that one?
Yeah.
Oh, they got all the road.
But night.
Yep, two button.
Everybody?
There we go.
That's why I like, let's see, council, just a little bit of levity is not so serious.
I was informed to take a lot of pictures.
I've been directed.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here.
Now, these buttons make you an official member of the coyote's path. And they are a very limited edition due to financial constraints. We hope you can visit the genealogy library sometime and also take part in our adoption ceremony next Tuesday, 5:30.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What a great idea. Love that. All right, action items. Our first action item this evening is regarding a potential annexation of the Cascadia Conservation District. So Allison and folks from the Conservation District, why don't you come up and present, and I'm sure we'll have some questions for you, so.
Good evening, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director, and I am with Craig. Please pronounce your last name.
Gaslink.
Gaslink, and he is Executive Director of the Cascadia Conservation District. They are a countywide conservation district, and they presented to you at the September 22nd meeting to talk about the benefits of the Conservation District. From the city's perspective, as a result of last year's fires, we have been working through the process to try and get as many resources in that recovery effort as possible, and Cascadia Conservation District was the recipient of significant pass-through funding from the Department of Natural Resources, and this is a regular thing that they do to carry out their conservation work and work with private property owners on their properties. From the city's standpoint, the accessibility to them as a part of our work with the CPa process, we will have recommendations coming out. One of those recommendations is that we have a citywide fire protection plan that is a part of the countywide fire protection plan. Cascadia is currently leading that effort on behalf of the county. They, again, are issues that we've had with canyon drains, their work with habitat, that those are things they can assist with. Cleanup days for the getting rid of vegetation. Right now, we are looking at doing more of that. As you know, we do that through our contract with Waste Management. There are rate implications to every, every service that you add to the Waste Management contract has a rate implication for your, your citizens. So we believe that there's a great value in having Cascadia Conservation District, having the city annex in. There is a per parcel, per taxable parcel fee. When we ran the parcel numbers for the City of Wenatchee, we were at just over 11,500 parcel, but when you remove the exempt parcels, the number that Cascadia provided was 11,103. Our number was a little bit lower, 10,995, I believe. So this would equate to a $51,000 impact for the Cascadia Conservation District. They are countywide. They, the City of Shalan and the City of Wenatchee have not been a part of the district. The City of Shalan voted to enter in this week.
This week.
And so I have Craig here to answer any questions that you may have, or any questions you may have of staff as well.
Which ones are the exempt parcels?
So that would be any parcel that does not pay taxable property taxes.
Okay.
Right.
My question comes from the resolution itself, that apparently, and I don't recall this, that the city was in the Conservation District for a five-year period?
I actually contacted David Stallheim. He was out on the Cascadia Conservation District Board, and it was at his urging that the city join. He did not remember why we opted out, and I believe there wasn't a charge, and they, the county was thinking about implementing a charge in 2001, and that may have been a reason at that time, but he was not able to discern, and we could not find anything to.
And that is my understanding, that there were concerns at that time about the potential assessment.
And how many supervisors?
We have five supervisors.
So, and by annexing then, the citizen inside the city would be eligible to run for election to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, that's correct.
I have a couple of, just thoughts, I guess, maybe, and a couple of questions related to that. If that was the case back, whatever, 2001, you said that was when that was done. This is in fact a raising of the property tax, you know, being done by the county commissioners, which is ironic, but in its own right, but the, the increase in, you know, for the city, looks like we're looking at about $51,000. Countywide, I mean, this now, I understand this, this district is the entire county of...
That is correct.
Of Slant, okay. So you've been operating on grant funding, is it just on grant funding, and that comes from?
So we have been historically operating on, the county has been giving us $10,000, and then the, what's called the Washington State Conservation Commission, they oversee all Conservation Districts in the state, has been giving us another $10,000. We've been operating off of $20,000 in fixed income, and then the rest of our operations have been grants. And we get grants from the Bureau of Reclamation, wherever we can, the Bureau of Reclamation, we have grants from the State Commission, DNR, BPA, a variety of sources at this time.
And the amount that you had this year was about a million and a half?
About a million and a half dollars. But a lot of that is, was slated for some big projects that we have going on up in Inia. It's a BPA grant where we're doing some habitat work up in the Inia River.
So with the, with the entire county now assessed, that would, that'll generate approximately how much?
With, if you, so without the City of Wenatchee, it will generate approximately $131,000, and then it'll be another additional $51,000 with the City of Wenatchee.
Okay.
The assessment, the $4.63 per parcel, it is a rate. I guess I shouldn't even be calling it an assessment. It's a rate, which has different, it's a different legal structure, and that can never be raised above $5 per parcel per the state statute.
So, yeah, this, this is an assessment that's basically similar to the weed board kind of thing, which brings me to the, and I'll get to that in a minute. One of the things, I guess I have another question that has to do with duplication, you know, the fire plan, which, you know, the county, the city, don't we already have, I guess Allison's a bit more directed to you, don't we already have, at least, at least my, back of my mind count, at least two or three groups that are doing kind of something like that?
The, actually, through the CPa process, this is all getting aligned, and Cascadia Conservation District has, is taking the lead along with Shalan County Natural Resources Department. The county has not had a countywide fire protection plan, and the recommendation that's coming out of our CPa process, and you'll see that in November, is that there is one that is specific to the City of Wenatchee, because the nature of the city is much different than the interface in the county.
So I guess my question is directed primarily to, you know, the idea of duplication, that we have, that we're gonna have several different plans, being, groups working on providing plans, but you're saying?
It's all aligned, so we, our plan would become then a part of the countywide fire protection plan.
Okay, okay. And I guess the other thing was the, the, back to the weed board kind of thing, that we've, we have these kind of assessments, which we don't, inside the city, we don't see much direct benefit, you know, to that, hardly at all, or rarely. And I guess that's, you know, the, the fire thing kind of raised, you know, awareness, and there were very specific things that came after the fire that, that probably the Conservation District could have provided us with, with some assistance. But in a given, in a quote-unquote, whatever those are anymore, normal, normal years, that, I guess that's where I'm wondering if, if the benefit for the, the assessment is equal to what we, what we would get. Now, these other things, you mentioned, I think, you know, I understand that those things would be valuable to the, to the city, but that, there's kind of part of me back there that, you know, we've, we've kind of had this kind of process from the county before, and wondering if that's more of the same.
We have had to turn, this year alone, we have had a lot of requests from, from citizens in the city for our fire programs, but we've also had to turn down other programs, such as works with some of the local parks. I, I just had to turn down a $30,000 project with Confluence State Park. So there are other types of work that we're doing, or would like to do within the city. In addition to that, and we can do this because there are people that live in the county that come into the city for the schools, but we have a, a school programs that we're participating in now, and our grants are running out of that, our grants for those sources were running out, which is another reason why we have sought this assessment. And then we hope to, with this, now that Shalan is in, and if Wenatchee comes in, I hope to try to get an urban forestry program and try to really, with, with the funds that, that we would receive from the city, focus on, on work that we can do within the city.
I think the other thing that became really apparent in the CPa process and talking about the solid waste efforts, we were talking to Bend, which is one of the other communities they're doing this process in. The access to cleanups, vegetation cleanups, needs to be done more frequently than we are doing it, and it would really help with our overall fire control, and we've been attempting to do that with our staff, as you know, with the South End one. Having the ability to do that more frequently would be a huge help to us in terms of the fire protection.
Can you tell me a little bit about that program? I mean, if there was a group of neighbors that wanted to have you come out with a chipper and things like that, what does that involve? How many neighbors have to be involved? What's their cost?
We have a lot, a lot of different programs like that. So we have, we have our Firewise program, where we go out and we work with communities as, as a whole, and, and you set up kind of a governmental structure, they get a board, and it provides funding for their communities to, we can then provide funding to hire in a chipper, for example, or other types of work that they propose for their communities. We have a roving chipping program that is at no cost to landowners, which is all grant-funded, and twice a year, in the spring and the fall. All they have to do is call us up and, and get on our list, and they put out all their, their fuels, their, their brush out on the curb, and we'll send a chipper out to, to pay for that. And then we also do, another popular thing that we do is free home assessments. We can, we can go out to anybody's house and do a walkthrough, it's a, we have a form to advise them on how to make their property more fire resilient. So those are the key, the big programs with the, with the fire.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Allison or Craig? If not, I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-52, approving of a petition for inclusion of additional territory with this Cascadia Conservation District, and authorizing the mayor to sign the same.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt Resolution 2016-52, approving for the annexation to the Cascadia Conservation District. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Craig, thank you, sir. Allison, thank you for your work. Next item on our agenda is Link Transit, Vacation of an Alleyway I didn't know we had.
Yeah.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Gary Owen, your city engineer. It's hard to see this, for sure.
It is. Looks like grass to me, or something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I don't know, I guess Link is doing some sort of a lot consolidation or something for financing purposes. I haven't asked him why, but they would like to vacate what's still a public alley as it was platted back in 1901, that goes right through the middle of that block that the, the whole transit center is located on there. So, and Link owns every parcel on that block now, so they represent two-thirds. I don't see preliminarily that we have any utility or access or garbage truck issues or anything like that, so what I, what we have for you here tonight with the help of the city attorney is a, just a resolution to establish a hearing date to formally have the hearing and go through the formal vacation of that alley to help out Link with the, whatever endeavors they're pursuing down there.
Is that alley actually there? I mean...
No, if you, it kind of would run basically right from, from the entrance on, what is it, Yakima Street to the entrance on Kitata Street, right, basically right through the area that's paved there already in front of all those bus shelters.
But it does prevent them from building structures that would go over the top of the alley, because they have to leave egress and all that kind of stuff, so.
And so we'll consider the merits of it at our public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2016-51, setting the hearing date, which is gonna be November 10th, 2016, relative to vacation of street and/or alley as described in that resolution.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt Resolution 2016-51, setting the public hearing date where we would consider the vacation of Alleyway as described in your packet. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
I don't know why they didn't do that when they first put the transit center in there.
Yeah.
Didn't need to, they were driving on it.
Yeah. All right, historic places. We're gonna perhaps add 135 North Wenatchee Avenue. Who's doing our historic? Kirsten, Steve?
Thank you. I'm Kirsten Larson, Associate Planner. A nomination was received from the property owner of 135 North Wenatchee Avenue to add their property to the Wenatchee Register of Historic Places. Wenatchee City Code Section 2.36.110 provides criteria for determining designation, and the building meets this criteria as it's significant for its unique architectural characteristics, its construction during 1929, which was a period of significance for Wenatchee, as there was significant economic growth going on at that time in the city. And the building has also had continuous use by merchants as a place to house their businesses downtown and help stabilize the downtown area. Wenatchee City Code Section 2.36.120 provides a process for designating properties, and the Historic Preservation Board held a public meeting, noticed in accordance with Title 13, on October 5th, in which they voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the nomination to the City Council to add the property to the Wenatchee Register of Historic Places. The property being placed on the Historic Register... The property being placed on the Historic Register is an incentive to the property owner to invest in the building for adaptive reuse and have the opportunity to apply for special property tax valuation based on the cost of their rehabilitation. And the rehabilitation of the building will preserve it for future generations and allow it to continue to contribute to the economic well-being of downtown. And the purpose of tonight's public hearing before the city council is to consider the addition of the property to the Wenatchee Register of Historic Places, to either approve or deny, and staff has prepared a draft motion. Thank you.
So the hearing was, any objections? What was the tone of the comments from the Historic Preservation Board when they discussed this?
They were positive comments. They spoke directly with the property owner and a potential future tenant, kind of about the implications of listing and applying for special tax valuations and that they're looking for the renovations to be considerate of the historic nature of the building. And the property owner was comfortable with that, so he wanted to proceed forward with the nomination.
Good. I think that's pretty admirable, actually, because that could end up really costing him more money in the long run trying to make sure that he's preserving the historic nature of the building, so.
He did another project like this in Ellensburg and I was down there and was able to see the building and he did an amazing job and it was beautiful.
As it transitions to its next use, it's going to be a pretty remarkable piece of downtown.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions for Kirsten? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-53, adding 135 North Wenatchee Avenue to the Wenatchee Register of Historic Places.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Asparza, to adopt Resolution 2016-53, adding 135 North Wenatchee Avenue to the Wenatchee Register of Historic Places. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kirsten, who's already out the door. She's gone.
Seahawks aren't even playing today.
Yeah. So, our, our next item is a little work session item and just to kind of tee it up for you, as you might remember, we missed a work session meeting a month or so ago and as things were building up, we actually had four for next week, all really complicated, deep, long issues. So we slid, not that this isn't complicated, so we've moved this one to today's meeting just to make sure that we had enough time to deal with it. And I would expect us to have a number of, we've got some really meaty ones next time. So anyhow, we're going to do the South Wenatchee Plan this evening if it meets with your approval, so. Brooke Glennon, crew, come on up. What's up? We're gonna do it anyway.
If we're setting up, I gotta just use the props. You have a plan on your desk that's this big, but this is all the information behind this. So we want people to actually look at the plan and not get overwhelmed with the book. Moral of the story is it's just a whole lot of work that went into this, this document. It's relatively concise.
Who's going to lead with this? Brooklyn or Matt or who? No, we're gonna-
Okay. So, the process of the plan, Steve, Matt and I coordinated with our consultants Eco-Northwest and CB East Strategic throughout the last year and a half to two years. What, this picture, can you see this? Okay. This picture you guys have is the front of the plan and the picture, it shows three different main events that you guys actually got in the celebrating successes document and these are pictures from those stories. So we highlighted those on the front. Just a quick history of the planning process, around 1998 to 2005, that the efforts that were done in South Wenatchee were really utilized to identify priorities for the area and something that really came out of that was just an obvious need for action, that there was something that needed to be done. And when, when those priorities are identified and a plan is kind of set in place, that it's going to be ready for action, that community is going to be receptive of that. In 2012, the AIA Stat really support, well, this plan really supported what that said and the concerns were safety and sidewalk and lighting, the need for kind of just more positive positivity around the business districts and then also around like the landscaping and the structure aspects of South Wenatchee. And so that plan is, I think, it's available on our website as well, so I think all of you have probably had a chance to see that, but it was, that I imagine was really received well from the community and so we used that to build upon during this. And so through our, the beginning of the planning process with the consultants as well as some community development block grant programs, like the Shland Avenue project, we utilized, we utilized the, I imagine, kind of logo and concept to really rally the neighborhood back together again and to gain support for the plan. And then we, it's titled the South Wenatchee Action Plan because it's something that we want to make sure is seen as an implementable aspect. It's not going to be something that we just make and, you know, our city staff get to look at it every once in a while. It's going to be something that the community really takes a hold of and the city plays a convening, convening role where we're kind of the backbone for, and support for all of the organizations, community members, business owners and other stakeholders, but the community really gets to take ownership of the plan and really almost directs where the action items are going. So this is a different kind of a plan. When we take into account that need for action, the parties identified that were, from the previous efforts, we wanted to make sure that in the planning process of it, it was really a plan that was developed with the community and not for the community. And we reiterated that and reiterated that over and over again at each meeting and I think the community really understood and respected that. Before we started planning, we had identified some of our own goals and those were to build relationships, bring stakeholders together and establish partnerships, and then try and take all of everything that we heard and have actions, identify resources, and then once the plan's developed, which would be a next step after incorporating this, is to have accountability from the community and say what projects within the plan that you've identified are ones that you would like to take the lead on. And so under the combined meetings, it's just a list of the categories that we reached out to in the beginning and so you guys participated in the joint board commission meetings and the joint, you know, we had the different sectors really intermixing and so that was a, it really launched the planning process that we used in the plan. I think by the end of it, it was really successful. In, in the plan, you'll see a picture of people holding up a sign of things that they could do and that was the last meeting. And it was a great mixing of elected officials, business owners, other government entities and then as a lot of the community members as well. So I think the, building off of everything that had been done within the last about 20 years to this plan, I think it's highly supported by the community and ready to be implemented.
Just one real quick. You guys received a celebrating successes that there's four projects that got done during the planning process. One, highlight Manuel Santos with the UNA is here. Formation of the Neighborhood Association was a big success before this is even done. Shland Project, the Met Hall Market.
The youth event and then the Columbia Elementary School.
Playground. And it was nice to have CDBG funds to help support those neighborhood, real neighborhood engagement projects.
There are six focus areas to the plan. Arts, culture, recreation, economic vitality, education and learning, health and human supports, transportation and infrastructure and public safety. I'm going to walk through each of these kind of briefly. We have pictures to go with them. I think these are pictures you've seen before. I'm going to kind of talk, kind of cover all the idea, or as many as I can of ideas that are brought up in the plan and kind of talk, mention some of the policy headings that are included. And then at the end, I'm going to kind of talk about how the, the goals and policies are structured. So the first one, arts, culture and recreation. We have a policy in our Creighton-Stallmore Public Art. South Wenatchee's the, long been the home of craftsmen and dam builders, fruit workers and railroad workers of many races and ethnicities and cultures and, and so one of the goals is to kind of celebrate that through public art, through participatory art and of course to also improve the, the appearance of the community. Talk about a cultural district. South Wenatchee Avenue already has a lot of great things going for it, but we also want to enhance what's already there. Some great examples that, some great models that we have looked at are Alvera Street in Los Angeles and Mission District in San Francisco. We have a policy to create cultural in the business district. Also have a policy to pursue historic preservation of significant sites and structures. There's a lot of great structures in South Wenatchee, so part of the planning process was doing a historic building survey, see what's there. Moving on to youth activities and parks. South Wenatchee is also one of the youngest parts of the city, a lot of young families. And so throughout the public process, whenever we were talking about whether it was sidewalks or activities, it was all about children, doing things for, for kids. And so parks and, and youth activities are, are critical. And so we have a policy to expand, enhance parks and trails, have a policy to support children, parents and schools. And there's more details to each of those you'll see in the plan. I also have a policy about increasing access to healthy food. This one fits into many of these different areas, but talk about grocery stores and be able to walk to, healthy food, community gardens, things like that. South Wenatchee's the home of many entrepreneurs and so we talk a lot about helping them in any way that we can and fostering innovation and future entrepreneurs. Also developing highway commercial area by the George Seller Bridge. There's a lot of opportunity, do all the cars that go by there to increase development in that area. Lot of opportunity sites, which Steve's going to talk about a little bit. We have them on a map, but basically we want to, we have a, a policy to create long-range strategies for each of these sites so that they get fully utilized. We have a policy to make land use changes to support economic development. There's certain areas in this, in the sub-area that we've identified that could really benefit from some changes, including Columbia Station where we could have some transit-oriented development, as well as the south end of the Shland-Mission couplet where it could have some live work and mixed-use development. The community center is an ongoing asset that we talk about and so we have a policy to expand, activate and grow the community center. And a lot of ideas for what could happen there between adult life skills and youth activities and all kinds of things. It was widely praised as a critical asset, but also underutilized, a lot more could happen there. I'll talk about housing and we all know that that's a critical issue in our city, so we have a, a policy about creating housing options. Lot of improvements can be made in, in the state of, of housing stock and the different options available. I'll talk about transportation, infrastructure, increasing, policy to improve access and mobility and a policy to identify priority areas for sidewalks and street lighting. Of course, this has already been a big discussion in the city, but that was one of the things we heard loud and clear from, from citizens was about sidewalks and street lighting. Also spending time looking at street safety, just beyond that with crosswalks and other elements of the built environment that affect pedestrian safety. Another idea is pedestrian bridge, extending that over the railroad tracks to Bridge Avenue, providing access from the Loop Trail to South Wenatchee. Right now, it's not terribly accessible. Talking a lot about pedestrian corridors and alleys. Steve will show those on, on a map, but basically wanted to create safe places, ways for people to travel. Use of alleys as a pedestrian corridor has also been talked about as we're waiting for infrastructure to develop. We have a policy about enhancing gateways and corridors. South Wenatchee's the, the home of numerous gateways, including School Chuck Highway, Malga Alcoa Highway, Columbia Station, where people come in on buses and trains, as well as the George Seller Bridge. And so making those look attractive and also very functional is very important. Again, we mentioned parks a lot, really emphasis on, on how to fully utilize all of our parks and, and keep them in good shape. Finally, public safety. Relationship between police and, and the citizens as well as code enforcement, other city officials and citizens, minimizing, preventing vandalism and improving quality of, of the housing stock, helping just improve the aesthetic appeal of, of the community. Have a policy to invest in public safety, support public safety engagement and as well as community engagement. Rather than having all of those policies organized the way I just presented them to you, due to all of the overlap that they would naturally have, we've organized them under three overarching goals. These goals include strengthen families, promote work and build community. This allows them to be kind of viewed in a more holistic manner and so that's the way we decided to, to organize those. Now I'll hand it over, I guess I should mention that these will be distributed out into the comprehensive plan and so they could be adopted that way as well. And I'll hand it over to Steve King.
Sure. Yeah, so, so that, you know, we're going through this pretty high level. You can look in the document, we encourage you to look at those more specific holes and policies. And in the pictures, there's proposals, you'll see some areas for initial ideas about where land use changes might occur. So for example, the area between Mission and Shland is Zone South Wenatchee Business District, so it doesn't allow for residential and yet we see quite a population there, so we're looking at potentially some, either overlay or some zoning changes that would allow for more residential, given that that's already naturally occurring and then encourage the reinvestment in those properties, which are, a lot of them are in failing condition right now. So that's an example that's embedded in the detail of this, of this document and, and specify a little more detail in the goals and policies. So in terms of the, the improvements, the, there's about $83 million worth of, I can look at this here. There's about $83 million worth of improvements. $36 million of that is the BNSF relocation, so really about 50, 50 million improvements. A lot of those improvements are already begun, like Hale Park, Met Hall Park with the TPL project. There's a lot of crossing work that's being done by engineering, public works. So we have, you know, we have about, estimated about $6 million in sidewalk work to do, $2.5 million in lighting. That's all included in the, in this list of projects that are public projects, not all of them city, but, and a lot of these projects are dealing with deficiencies that have, you know, in a, in a new development pattern, wouldn't be there like sidewalks and parks and whatnot. So this is an interesting plan in that we're not dealing with a lot of obviously new empty land, it's dealing with what you have. And it's of course very challenging, which is why the neighborhood involvement is so On the next page, just go ahead and go to economic development, just to give you a sense of what kind of investment we're looking at. We've estimated there's approximately 750 housing units, additional housing units that can be added through targeting a number of opportunity sites. We had asked, we identified 23 opportunity sites and those sites have opportunities for residential and commercial, as well as even some maker space type industrial, light industry type activities. In those opportunity sites, the current value of those are 14 million, the current assessed value, and we estimate about $92 million of potential investment into those sites, which would result in about an increase of $350,000 in property sales tax by the time this all said and done, depending on how- it's all said and done, depending on how that all, that mix shakes out. Just to give you a sense, right now, the entire study area, we receive about $433,000 in property tax, when you consider that this area goes all the way to the south end and up to Okanagan Street, it's a massive area, and that's obviously not a whole lot of property tax. So, there is a goal to elevate the entire area to improve its condition, and like I said, we focused on 23 focus sites, but we anticipate the entire area to elevate. And that goes right along with the central theme of this plan, and that is to change the perceptions of South Wenatchee. One of the things that just came out loud and clear is we're tired of being categorized as the poor end of town and whatnot, and because there's a lot of richness in the culture, in a lot of the old homes, and most importantly, in the spirit of the people, which we saw at the Neighborhood Association event last week. So, anyway, that is a quick overview. I would say that there's a lot of detail in the folios, which are project-specific as well, but we're not, we didn't think, it should take a couple hours to go through that.
Well, it'll take us a while to read it, certainly. I'm, I'm more interested in the capital facility, if this, this is a sub-area plan, right? So, it'll have to have a capital facility all of it to it. So, I'm really interested in the six-year financially constrained capital facility plan for this, because as it pointed out in here, that's a lot of investment in, and when we're looking citywide, that's a lot of money. So, my question then goes to philosophy, philosophy and development regulations. And I think we all understand that there are deficiencies throughout the whole community. I mean, we just annexed an area that probably has some fairly significant ones as well. And one of the things that strikes me when, in the residential areas of South Wenatchee is the lack of curb gutter and sidewalk, which probably means storm drain as well, I'm not sure what kind of.
Pretty good storm, not bad storm drains.
Okay. So, and, and in a lot of areas of the city, street lighting as well. And usually, when you, when we poll citizens, what are they missing, usually, the number one thing is sidewalks that they want, and street lighting is number two, and parks are number three, usually. I mean, it's, so, philosophy-wise, when we look at redevelopment opportunities, whether it's here or anywhere in the city, are we going to be sure that our development regulations are appropriately and fairly, equitably, essentially charging off a portion of redevelopment of public infrastructure on the growth? So, growth is paying for growth, as well as the contribution that the general taxpayer makes? So, if, for example, we go into a housing, an area where I, let's say I assemble a couple of lots of older single-family, smaller single-family homes, and zoning will allow me to turn, say, three units into 12, so then I have an impact on sidewalk, curb and gutter, lighting, whatnot. Are we, do we have the regulations in effect to make sure that growth is participating, and it's not just on the general taxpayer to provide that incremental improvement?
And so, for, for the most part, that's already in our codes, that if somebody were to come in and tear down some houses and put in a new apartment complex, they had built a sidewalk, and we've seen examples of that. I think the challenge is, is to, in, try to keep in the prices down in that, you know, watching the gentrification issue, and trying to encourage the investment in the housing stock. We don't want, that's one thing that was identified with AIA and in previous studies, is the housing stock in South Wenatchee, Wenatchee is not seeing disinvestment like Detroit, for the, for the most part. There are a few places, but for the most part, it's still a good valuable housing stock, and what that needs is, it needs continual investment by the property owners. And so, I think the challenge that, what you're talking about, Mark, is how, how much, how do you keep prices down, how do you get the, the public infrastructure, and also encourage that reinvestment? And that's kind of that whole neighborhood trying to prevent blight issues, challenge that a lot of cities face. But from a redevelopment standpoint, those codes are in place now. If you get a building permit that exceeds 50% of the value of the house, you have to build sidewalk, for example.
Yeah. Yeah, which also helps with the appearance, not just the, but, you know, it's nice to know where the street ends and the yard begins.
And that's, that was, that's probably one of the most noticeable things about the South Shaland project, we didn't have enough money to put sidewalk on both sides, but we put a curb on the other side, and now you have orderly parking, a very clean edge, and it just totally changed the dynamic of that block. I think there's, you know, you look at what City Seattle's doing, and some of their alternatives for sidewalk too, you know, they're, you know, does it have to be curb, concrete curb and gutter? There are new ways of looking at that sidewalk through striping and the prototyping that they're doing in San Francisco, you know, the creative way to create safe walking paths. Right now, you gotta walk around the cars, and that's the problem, and that's, that's where it's a mess.
Yes, ma'am, do you have a question?
I have a question. How do you plan for people to be willing to sell their property, and then for an investor to be willing to come in and build?
Like on the redevelopment of that property?
Well, if somebody owns property, and they don't want to sell it, then, I just don't understand, I understand what you want to do, and it's a great plan, but I just don't quite know how it's all going to fit together.
So, typically, what happens is, is when the housing prices are high enough, it drives the value of consolidation of properties, and that's a very hard thing to do. And so, we're looking at areas for housing that is not currently in housing, like in some of the commercial areas, industrial areas, and rehabbing some of those properties that would allow for housing.
I agree, I think it would be great if you could go in and buy two, three, four lots and put a big apartment, I agree, that would really clean it up, but I was just wondering how you get people to willingly, I mean, I offered to buy somebody's property next to mine because it's such a big pen, I couldn't stand it, and I wanted to buy it to clean it up, and I was supposed to buy it without ever viewing what was on the other side of the fence, and the guy had the cash, and he'd give me keys, uh huh, I don't think so.
That's what makes it difficult, I mean, it's really hard to consolidate properties, it's hard to, yeah.
I was asking a question, because I'm in there, and I just, I just don't know how you're going to get some of these people to cooperate.
Yeah, and you won't always, but code enforcement will help some, in some of those instances, to get people to.
We see a lot of interest by the public in doing projects, or infill projects, or additions, there's a lot of, if you go to the neighborhood, you can see a lot of long, narrow lots, irregular lots, and our codes, what we tend to find are an impediment to people to be able to do some infill projects in our sites, because of how the lots are set up, or people don't want to go through a public hearing process just to do infill on their site. So, and there's a lot of really good examples of things that the planning commission's been working on, policy-wise, to provide some guidance, that ultimately, you could look at, code-wise, that can provide predictability for the neighborhood, as far as the character of what goes in, and passing the scale, but also provide predictability and a straightforward process for people who are interested in doing infill projects. But on a consistent basis, we're seeing people that want to do things in neighborhoods, but our codes can create a challenge.
We're going through a comp plan amendment, aren't we? Are we going to see some changes to our code to help with that?
Correct, and the planning commission has a whole series of draft policies that'll be bringing forward in the public process, to consider for those changes, by its direction for people to look at.
So, Steve, I have a question for you or for staff, and you're not going to give me the answer, but I look at the capital projects that are on your current list, or, I mean, if, how, how would you re-rate, where's our first million dollars supposed to go? Is it to get Hale Park completely done, is it to put money into sidewalks, is it street lighting? I mean, how do you prioritize this list and say, city, we want you to focus, and obviously, we don't have $83 million, so how do we, what's the neighborhood going to tell us they want us to get to work on?
The priority is street light, sidewalks, and parks, just like what Mark said.
And can they prioritize those three for us?
So, the, for the sidewalks, we're going to do a pedestrian plan, which engages the neighborhoods, the schools, and everybody to prioritize what sidewalks go in first.
That'll be citywide.
Yeah. And then, the, as far as lighting goes, you know, we're working right now with the PUD to look at a low-cost lighting solution, that would not necessarily be the pedestrian scale that we really want, but it's maybe an interim step to really help with the neighborhood safety issues. They're looking at redoing the, their LED retrofit program, so Matt and I met with them actually this week, to talk about what are the opportunities to add lights to the existing wood poles that are out there. We can make a huge impact for not a whole lot of money, right off the bat. And that was driven by the owner of the Met Hall Market, Adriana, who came in and requested at the PUD, absent the city, that, you know, worked through the PUD. So, to prioritize sidewalk lighting and parks, and I think that's what we're working right now. In terms of the business district, the priority is probably getting some, getting the cultural district going. We talked about, that was the public input we had, you know, doing some low-cost things like cleaning banners, some paint projects, to really set the cultural district off. And the big project associated with that is getting a bridge connection to the Apple Craft Loop Trail. You know, that's a $3.6 million project, just like the one we have downtown, and it would, right now, if you're down in South Wenatchee, unless you trespass across the tracks, you have to walk all the way to Thurston Street, and then all the way back down to the Black Bridge to get over to East Wenatchee, and that, you know, it's, it's a slam dunk.
It's the same if you're riding your bike, too.
Yeah.
One thing that, with the implementation of the plan, will be, this was sent out to all the stakeholders that were involved in the planning process, and so, they have an opportunity to look at it, and then we'll kind of be doing a call for involvement, and soliciting, you know, the PUD, and the county, and certain businesses, because during the planning process, people identified which projects they would want to invest in, and ones that they'd be interested in helping in. And so, that's going to be a big testament to the city actually playing that convening role, whether it's, you know, the infrastructure and things like that, we can definitely start, you know, moving the ball on that. But when it comes to, you know, the entrepreneurship summit, that was a conversation that started, that could be something that the city doesn't even necessarily have to have a hand in, but we can help in convening those partners together. So, in the prioritization of the projects, I think a big piece will be bringing those stakeholders back together and saying, where do you see your capacity, what are some, we add analysis of this, you know, the low-hanging fruit, what are those projects, and what can we really start with that's going to make the biggest impact with the least amount of resources right now? So, I think that process will bring more to light of the things that we can do out of, out of this list, too. And the folios, the folios that are at the very end, those give more, those kind of small, low-hanging fruit projects that we'll be able to convene early on.
I just have one more, I guess, clarifying question. When we, when we talked about mechanical changes, if you will, to the existing commercial zoning that would allow more residential use, are, are we, are we over-zoned in commerce? Is that what we're saying?
So, the, the area between Mission and Shaland has a high residential, has a lot of people living there. If you go to the Huckleberry at the bus stop time, you can get a really good idea how many people live there. And so, what happens is, is our current code, if somebody wants to expand their residential use, intensify it, add a laundry room is a great example, which we had to, technically, we are supposed to deny those, those expansions of those uses, because that's the sole, solely residential is not allowed in the commercial zone. Now, if you do a mixed use, it's allowed. And so, what we want to do is, we want to encourage investment in residential rather than, and, and with the changes in retail, there's just less demand for commercial as well. So, we have a whole north end that's pretty spotty, a lot of pavement out there that could intensify as well, so why drive for so much commercial when we're not meeting that residential? Basically what you said, Mark, we're over-commercialized a little bit.
Yeah.
So, next steps?
The next steps is, this becomes, this will become adopted as part of our comprehensive, 2017 comprehensive plan update. What we would like to do is, after folks have had a time to review it, it's probably early next year, we want to come in and adopt this as a guidance document until the 2017 plan is done, which is the formal adoption. And just as a guidance document, basically means you're accepting it or use it till across, get to the 2017 plan update.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Just, Steve, just, I guess, an observation, and this process has been going on a lot longer than I've been, you know, here, but having been involved in the AIA process and that kind of thing. One of the things we tried really hard to do in that process, and I, and I think we were pretty successful with it, and that was to try to convey that the city is not the, we're not the leader of the charge, okay? We have a role, certainly, probably as much as anything, money, okay? But in terms of leadership and those kinds of things, one of the things, this is an observation, not a criticism, don't take, it's just an observation, and you're, in the back of the packet there, we have the plan-action kinds of things, and then it has the, you know, the little sidebar there, it says, who's leading? Thirteen of the 20 items have the city of Wenatchee leading. And some of those, I'm, you know, I, I sense it, we are facilitators, and we can be facilitators, but I guess it kind of jumped out at me, having been through that process, that we wanted the community, the south end, to be the ones taking on a lot of these leadership roles. I'm looking at one, in fact, you just mentioned a moment ago, this, the entrepreneurial building, entrepreneurial support. As, as the south end, I guess, morphs more into a very distinct entity, whether it has its own, like the Downtown Business Association or whatever, as those kinds of things come, I would anticipate that, and I would hope that that's where these kinds of things would come out of, rather than the city, again, sort of we become the one that's taking, doing things to people rather than.
This, this plan is all about convening, so when we talk about leadership, it's convening. So, what we've already done is the power, the Neighborhood Association is now leading a lot of efforts down there. So, so you're exactly right, that's what this, but I don't think the city can just step back and not play a role, because we are integrally tied. Somebody wants to do sidewalk, what we need to do is figure out how to get out of the way and to facilitate, because government is a great cabasher, right?
Yeah, yeah. See, and that's, that's my, that's my fear, is that it kind of ends up back, kind of the way it used, way it used to be.
If we don't figure out how to get out of the way and facilitate things, we will be forced into leading, because we will be stopping things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
And our government, every UNA meeting I go to, they ask, how can we help? They asked Keith Brown the other day, how can we help? We'll help interpretate, interpret. You know, we've got to figure out how to facilitate that energy that wants to help, which I think is just awesome. I've never gone through planning process where there's been so much ambition and energy to help, they want to go out and build sidewalks. When can we go build some sidewalks? And that, so how, we got a right-of-way permit, we got engineering, we got all these things that we do in a city, which is good, I'm not saying, but it's, it stops that ambition. So, we, we need to figure out how to encourage it. And so, I like, I love the San Francisco market street, Google it, market street prototyping, it's all about how you get the community to do stuff, and it's, you've heard me talk about tactical urbanism, it's actually getting out and doing things, and government becomes a facilitator, not a cabasher or a leader.
And I think the intent behind those lead roles was, what organization or entity or agency has the ability to convene all of the partners that are in that next box? So, it's not that they're going to be leading the meeting, it's almost like if you bring a consultant in to mediate a conversation, it's kind of like, that's okay, we invited you all here, here's a topic, and then, oh, here's some thoughtful questions, and allowing those entities that are that lead to be the resource to bring all of those together, because they might have connections and networks with and all of it. But that's exactly what you said is what our hope and intent is with, with implementation of it.
Good. Okay, great, guys, thank you for being here.
Yeah, like, like the document, it's got.
It was intentionally supposed to be visual.
Yeah, some good stuff in there.
Because nobody reads anymore.
All right, mayor's report, boy, kind of lots going on, I guess I'll spend a couple minutes, we are. I guess I'll spend a couple minutes, we are, I would say the finance committee is two-thirds of the way through the budget process, so we've got some sort of a revenue number. It's obviously a little bit bigger with Old Station, not including sales tax and utility tax. The request to the finance committee for new positions was fourteen. Think we're going to get to seven of them, some form of that, including on the police side, at least one new officer, one new records clerk. The public information officer that's bilingual for cultural outreach is in the budget as well, and a few other positions. We're working our way through it today. Unfortunately, Keith was gone and Mike was gone, so Lyle was the sole council member that went through. You've got some information that we've given to you to review, kind of where things are at. So we're working through it again, and I think we'll have a, at least, staff's final budget to the finance committee in the next couple of weeks, and then you'll see it the first week in November. So if you have any specific questions, we're kind of working through the process. We're working hard to try to make sure that, I mean, the sales tax number is big. And what's happening, as, as your sales tax number grows and your utility tax number grows, your property tax number becomes less of an effect. I think when I first became mayor, it was about a third, a third, a third. And we're trying to shove as much property tax as we can into our street program that we're, we're, we're getting to the point where your general fund is going to be almost entirely funded by sales tax and utility tax. So you better get your sales tax number pretty accurate, right? If you're going to try to have a street program, that's one that we want to try to have. So we're working hard on that. It's, it's, you know, trying to project next year's construction climate that's reoccurring, right? The big ones, but how many of those three or four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes are we going to have next year? We had a bunch this year, and you can kind of look, and so we're, we're working our way through the process. It's been, you know, every year is different, but we're, we're trying to work and preserve as much as we can that gets into the street fund. So anyhow, so you've got a list to look at, and we'll keep plugging away at it and hopefully see where it goes. Did meet with the Trust for Public Lands this week, you know, they're all geared up for Met Hall Park and redoing that. So they've made a significant ask of the city in terms of financial stuff. I told them we wouldn't get back to them for a little while, and we'll come to the finance committee as well. And the museum was in today, the finance committee, to talk about their six-point-three-million-dollar redo of the upstairs and all of the, what's the right term for?
Exhibits.
Exhibits. Last exhibits were redone about forty years ago, so they think it's every forty years, you gotta redo it. So they've got some great plans. They just said they need money, and of course, we haven't even begun to talk about what that might look like. Transportation Council today was really interesting, as we talked about some R-Valley What's Next, and regional planning, and transportation. Your committee that you formed on pavement preservation is doing incredibly good work. Smart group of people. Sounds like they're leaning towards the, they want to pave the streets and not put on chip seal. So they're leaning towards the more expensive model, which will put you guys in a real interesting position, as we try to look for revenue to pay for the more expensive model. But they are doing great work, and.
I was hoping they were going to tell us how we're going to do that.
Oh, no.
They're not done till they do.
They will give you all of the options that are available to a city council for councilmatic approval, let me put it that way.
They may want to get some voter, voter options, too.
And they'll give you some voter options, too. I think at, at the end of the day, what we may end up with is something that's the B version, and if the voters want the A version, maybe they can help us there. But anyhow, I think they're doing great work. I don't exactly know their, their timing for getting back to us. I know we were hoping sooner rather than later, but I don't think any of the things that are going to happen along that path are going to happen towards, somewhere towards, you know, first to middle part of next year. At Finance Committee today, Dave Tregeser showed up. He's our bond underwriter. I know bond's a four-letter word for the city of Wenatchee, but the LRF stuff is going as planned. So you'll see a resolution for adoption in the next couple of weeks. Plan is to get to the bond market by about the middle of November. Current all-in interest rate on a twenty-one-year bond with a little bit of pre-refunding of another bond is still under three percent. Two-point, two-point-seven?
Two-point-six-seven.
Yeah, with our A-plus rating. So seems to be the right time to get to the bond market to get us going on some of our LRF projects. So that seems to be going, going well. Allison, what else?
I don't know if you want to report anything from your mayor's meeting?
Been meet, again, we meet quarterly with the Shalane County PUD, and then the five Shalane County mayors. Nothing drastic coming up. Mostly the PUD was talking about where they're going to put substations, and they've got issues in both Shalane and Leavenworth. We don't have an issue with that, they're all kind of pre-planned out down here. So that was really about the biggest part that we, they talked about. Council, so just for next week, before we turn over to the council, we've got three or four items in our work session. Which ones are they?
Cashmere Park, master plan, and also the request for a change of use from the Women's Resource Center. The marijuana proposal, and that is coming forward after review from the planning commission. And then sewer comp plant and wastewater treatment plant facilities plan.
So those are all going to be pretty juicy little items that might take some time, so the reason why you got the South Wenatchee plan today. Council members, anything going on on?
I serve on the education committee for AWC, and we had a conference call this morning. And we are, the committee is working on, well, the AWC staff, and along with Western Washington University, is working on putting together some advanced leadership training for their members. And it sounds really great, dealing with things like, you know, like affordable housing and those kind of things. It would start with, like, there would be training at the next conference, and then some trainings during the year. They may be online or whatever, and then finishing up the following year at the next conference. It's a really great idea, I really like it. I'm hoping that we can do it, but it is going to be pretty expensive per member. It's about fifteen-hundred dollars for the year, that's all, per person.
Okay. Anything else, council members, and stuff you're working on? Okay, if not, we will see you next Thursday for a couple hours of work session items. All right, thank you all, we're adjourned.